So that's what we know. But yes, they were hoping to be back the end of this summer. They intended that in the fall. Now it's January. They have their fun. I have all their big fun. I brother, I my house. Yeah. So you always have. Get rid of. Well, the other. Thank you. Thank you.
To work. Hey, Jim. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:05. So I'm going to begin this public hearing. Welcome. I'm Rick Garcia. I'm the executive director of the Call Out Department of Local Affairs, also known as DOLA. And I hate to say it this way, but this is not DOLA's first rodeo as it relates to community development block grant disaster recovery, nor is it probably any of yours as residents of Boulder County. We had a very similar exercise. Oh, I was going to introduce Ally first. I apologize. Who's handling our translation services is named Ally.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas tardes. This is just to let you all know. My name is Ally. I'm here for the Community Language Cooperative along with Sherry and Katie. And we are here because we have a dedication to language justice, to ensuring that everyone is able to participate in these conversations in the language that is most comfortable and acceptable to them. For that reason, we're providing interpretation tonight in Spanish and American Sign Language. If anyone would like to receive these services and is not currently set up to do so, please come and speak to one of us to make sure that you're able to communicate forward. I'm going to repeat this in Spanish and just in case, then we'll get started. So buenas tardes. Como dije, mi nombre es Ally. Vengo de Community Language Cooperative. Aquí con mis colegas Sherry and Katie. Y nosotros estamos aquí porque tenemos un compromiso por lo que se llama la justicia del lenguaje. Queremos crear espacios donde todo el mundo pueda participar en el idioma más accesible y el idioma de queridos. Para lograr este propósito, tenemos una interpretación simultánea hoy en español, tanto como el lenguaje de señas. Entonces, si cualquier persona necesita el lenguaje de señas o el lenguaje del español, por favor, que venga a hablar con nosotras para que podamos proveer de una interpretación simultánea. Thank you so much for having us. Muchas gracias por tenernos.
Thank you. Is this also visual? I know this is virtual. This is a hybrid. Should I be standing someplace in particular?
Farther away from that, probably.
Okay. Is that better?
Once you're talking, probably.
Okay, good. Well, once again, welcome. Rick Garcia, Executive Director of the Call Out Department of Local Affairs, member of the other folks' cabinet. This event is something that we at DOLA, as I mentioned, have done a few times. In fact, here in Boulder County, a number of years ago, we did host several hearings on the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, which was post the 2013 floods that impacted Boulder County, wherever it can as well count. In fact, the good news is that the folks who are leading tonight's team from DOLA are veterans of that DR program. And you know, the ins and the outs of what the Community Development Block Grant Program is intended to do and kind of support ill have of the impact to communities here in Boulder County, challenges Superior and Lewisville. Also want to acknowledge that the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program is a federal program. It comes to us, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's our federal dollars. And through the good work of our congressional delegation folks representing Boulder County and our two United States senators, they were able to snag some additional money, federal money, to support the households, the victims of the Russian fire. So that's, that's the good news. We're not talking about the kind of dollars that we had during the post-flood of 2013. Nevertheless, the dollars are going to be augmented into an action that will continue to support the rebuilding and the recovery of households that are making those decisions to rebuild. That's going to augment the funding that Colorado has already made available through Senate Bill 22-206. And also the dollars that the Boulder Community Foundation is also supporting households. So this will be one, one big pool of dollars that will be supporting the rebuilding activities here in these communities. So again, welcome. This is also a virtual presentation. So those of you that are joining via the internet, welcome. And I'd like to hear as well. And I'm going to turn the program over now to Dave Bowman, Bowman, who is, I think, the chief veteran and has been involved with the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program directly. And now is a deputy director of the division of local government. And he will introduce the rest of the DOLA team. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, Rick. I understand we have to do a quick tech check because the folks on video are having a hard time hearing. So just bear with you for a moment and then we'll keep the chair up. Can we get thumbs up from people on the call? Or how do you know this is us?
Well, ask them. Keep talking.
Okay. Anybody got any good jerks? Are we picking up on, is this the mic that we're using?
It's the owl.
The owl's the mic. How about if I just don't use the mic and project? Any better?
Better.
Okay. I'm going to turn the mic off and all the presenters are going to have to speak loud. So I want to kick it off by just sort of thanking and introducing the folks in the room that put this together. And also let you know that this is not a DOLA staff effort that we've done in a vacuum. You guys all have great people in your local governments that are doing the recovery work, like Gary Sanfrisson in Boulder County. We've got Lisa Ritchie in Lewisville, along with Peter Gibbons and Allison, Allison James in Superior. We meet with them every week. We talk about these issues and try to figure out what those priorities are. As far as the staff that we have here today, I want to first introduce Ann Miller and her team. She is our Chief Resiliency Officer. And also on her team is Natasha Albert. And she is really our recovery manager who's driving the train on these local recovery efforts. Jimmy Barrera has been really instrumental in making everything work tonight and getting us organized. She's our community engagement and communications person. And on the grant side, we have Tim Katers. When he's not doing CBGDR work, he also is going to be overseeing the disaster resilience recovery money, as well as his day job of the Energy Impact Grant Program. And with Tim is Will Kandish. He is actually going to be managing this particular grant that we're talking about tonight. And we have Chris Lemay in the back. He is your regional manager. He works with all the local governments very closely on addressing their needs and helping them to get resources. And then in our sister agency, we have the Division of Housing. We have Allison O'Kelly. She oversees all the CBG programs, which she also gets to help us carry the load on the CBGDR grant. And with her is Pam Gibson, who will be working with Allison on this grant program. And they will be available after this meeting if we have questions that are maybe beyond the scope of the comment. And this particular program will stick around for a few minutes to answer the questions and work with you one on one. So I'm going to start by going through the agenda. And can you, Tim, can you check and see if the audience can hear me if I'm standing this far away? Or do I need to go step closer again? Sorry. Okay. The question is, is can everybody hear me when I'm standing a little bit further away from the mic to run the slides? Just want to make sure that they can dissipate. Excellent. All right. So here's our agenda for today. We've already done the introductions. I'm going to talk a little bit about why we're actually here tonight and what we want to accomplish. And then I'm going to turn it over to Will Kandish, who's going to talk a little bit more about the details about what's actually in the plan. And he's going to turn it over to Natasha, who's with our Resiliency Office. And she's going to go into the mitigation aspect of the plan and what we're going to be doing there. She will turn it back over to Will to kind of talk through some next steps. And then Will is going to turn it over to Ann, and she's going to kind of moderate our questions and answers, both from the folks that are on video and from the folks in the room. So that's kind of the run of the show for tonight. And just to give you a little bit of context, I wanted to kind of show you that this is just one piece of the larger recovery pie. You know, we don't want people to think that, oh, this one pot of money is going to solve all of our problems. It's not, but we are going to leverage that with others and do the best that we can and plug everything together. And it is very normal that even though we have all this money available through these different sources, it's never as large as the overall unmet need, which you'll see in the slides when we'll go through. One thing about these particular funds is that they are flexible and that you can do infrastructure, you can do housing, you can do economic recovery. It is geared towards low and moderate income households. So that limits us a little bit in what we can do with these funds. And then we have to leverage other funds for those other households. But it is designed to serve those that are most vulnerable. And it's also designed to be community priorities. The CD and Community Development Block Grant is community development. So it's really geared towards filling those gaps and allowing communities to rebuild. And it unfortunately tends to come over a longer period of time. We'll talk about that a little bit, too. I wanted to show you sort of how this particular funding that we're talking about tonight, and that's the roughly $6 million under the CBGDR program, that is going to be blended with other resources. So that's, we have more money than that to address the housing rehab. This money is going to come later in the state money, which is more flexible. So we'll kick it off with that. And then we'll be leveraging that with this federal money. And then that will help the other dollars go further. I do want to emphasize on this, we don't need, you know, you as homeowners in the room to go apply for CBGDR. It's not going to be a separate program that you go apply for. It's all going to be one piece. You're going to go through the recovery navigators, just like everybody else. They're going to target you towards these rebuilding funds. And whoever is working your particular case is going to figure out whether this is the money that can be used, or this is the money that can be used, or this is the money. So just want to emphasize that you're not doing four or five different applications. It's going to be one point of entry. And we'll figure out the money on the back end, depending on those different cases. All right. And so I want to kind of cover why we're here for tonight. Really, all we're doing tonight is we're presenting the draft action plan. What is our intent with this money? And we're kicking off a required 30-day public comment period. And this is, we don't have a choice on this. This is, and it's actually a good thing. But because this is federal money, we're required to post the plan publicly. We give people 30 days. And it's very easy for you to provide comment. If you don't want to provide comment tonight, but you want to, you know, review the details of the plan, you can go home, look up the plan on the website, and there'll be a box you can fill out. And we'll get into more details on this and provide you all the different ways that you can provide that content over the next 30 days. And we also want to answer questions. If there's anything about the plan that's not clear, if you have questions about that tonight, we'll answer those. If you want to kind of limit those questions to about the plan. But like I said earlier, if you have things that aren't part of DR and you want to talk to staff afterwards, we'll be available for that. Two important notes as you're looking at this. One is that you're probably going to look at that plan. It's 15 pages. You're going to say, why does the state put in this table? Or why is this language in there? Some of that is HUD required language. And there's, there's two audiences for this. Once this 30-day period is over, we submit this to HUD and they're going to review and approve it. And there's certain language that has to be in there. The other audience, of course, is the general public. So we're trying to walk that line between making it something that the general public can understand and also putting it in HUD speak. And that they get the information that they need so that they can do a quick and easy approval on that plan. I also want to be very clear that we have the flexibility to modify this plan, even after we submitted the HUD, even after it's approved. And I fully expect that six months to a year from now, we're going to look at these programs and say, oh, well, we need more money in this program, maybe less money in that program. Maybe we need a new program. We have the flexibility to make those amendments over time once we see who's actually coming in the door and utilizing those resources. With that, I will turn it over to Will Kandish.
Hi, everybody. My name is Will Kandish. I'm the CBGDR Program Manager. Just a couple of housekeeping notes. We've kind of touched on some of this. Next slide I'll show, we have the action plan available for you to review online. We have Spanish and ASL interpretation available, thanks to CLC. And we are taking comments and questions during this public meeting. We're going to try to prioritize answering the questions first, but we will be required to answer all comments and questions once we submit the final action plan. And that will be a part of it. So we will address everybody. I also wanted to note that we have a couple of members from Colorado Spirit here, and they offer mental health and counseling services for fire victims. So they have some materials in the back. Do you feel interested in writing? We pay up some funding for FEMA for that. And for those online, we'll be using the Q and A box feature instead of just typing questions in chat. So we will be trying our best to address in-person questions and people who are attending virtually as well. So we can get everyone involved. Anyone wants to scan the QR code really quickly? We have our draft action plan posted on our website. And I will also talk about later on the presentation about, you know, how you can comment or ask questions, the email, mail, and things like that as well. So even after this meeting. Skip everyone. To get it. So just kind of go over a brief overview of the program itself and to knock out some of those pesky acronyms. CBGDR stands for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. And as Rick mentioned, if those funds are allocated to the state, we have the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And typically, these funds follow the same types of rules that are state's annual CBG appropriation. But there is a tieback required to the disaster, of course, as well as a duplication of benefits evaluation. And then overall, these funds are very flexible. And also, as Dave mentioned, we can amend the action plan later on down the line if we don't, if we feel like there are other needs to be met within the program areas. So here's a breakdown of our allocation that we received. We received just about $7.5 million in a couple of requirements that HUD has put on the funds as well. 70% of those of the program dollars and the required mitigation funds must go to low to moderate income households in the area. 80% of all the funds must be used in Boulder County, which is, we have listed as the most impacted and distressed area for the disaster. And then 15% of those funds will be used for mitigation activities, which my colleague Natasha will touch on later on in the presentation. And then 15% of the funds may be used for different planning activities, which we'll also touch on later. So this is the breakdown. And then 5% for administration for running the program. Give you just a brief timeline of, you know, how we ended up here today. HUD provided a notice about the funding in March of this year. And then they released the Federal Register Notice, which will also be sending a copy of this presentation out. And all these things will be clickable. This was published in May of this year. And these Federal Register notices fail in the rules for the disaster recovery and the funding available for that allocation. And as I mentioned before, they outlined the physical area, which HUD uses the term most impacted and distressed or mid-area for where the funds are, and that's Boulder County. Our public comment period, we're brought up a 30-day public comment question period that begins today and will continue through September 16. And then we will have to respond to all those comments and take any of the feedback and put that in the plan as appropriate. And then we will submit the final action plan, public action plan, on September 19. HUD will then have 60 days to review or reject or conditionally approve the plan. And then once they've approved it, we can begin a grant agreement with them. And then the funds can begin rolling out. So yes, our most impacted and distressed, this is just a map of the fire. We will be spending all of our funds that we received in Boulder County itself. So kind of going back, you know, how we set up these programs? What was our assessment? The unmet needs for the community? We worked with federal, state, local agencies, local stakeholder organizations to get a better understanding of the impacts and the unmet needs of the disaster. And just give a brief overview. We found that residential damage was, had the largest unmet need. The total residential damage value was almost, over happened, over $500 million. Commercial damage was valued at about $60, about $66 million. And then in total, we found that the residential damage was estimated at about 89% of the total damage across, across the board for the fire. And 97% of all structures that were damaged or destroyed were homes. So this kind of gives a breakdown, you know, taking those, those numbers from the damage, you can see them listed on there. We have the estimated impact in the areas of housing, infrastructure, and economic revitalization. And then trying to break down what funds have been used or allocated already for the different program areas. And we've been able to break these, condense this down. And in the plan itself, there's more detail about, you know, the individual programs that fit and which area. And we came up with this unmet need funds that haven't been out, unmet need of the damage. And as you can clearly see, there's the largest unmet need is in housing. And so with limited funding, we really thought that that'd be the focus area of the funds that we received for the DR grant. And kind of our approach and priorities, you know, we want to rebuild damaged and destroyed homes that were used as primary residences that were under occupied at the time. We also want to be able to assist rental properties as well. And then also that mitigation set aside incentives for housing mitigation activities, funding for planning capacity and different local government mitigation projects. Said this a couple of times, but it is important to note, we do have the flexibility to amend the action plan and kind of adjust some of those funds as we go along if things don't meet our initial expectations. So that's always really important to note about that. So here's our breakdown of our proposed programs and the budget for those programs that we plan to use for these funds. Large focus on housing, of course. You know, housing homeowner rehabilitation, reconstruction, housing for small rental units, rehabilitation and construction. And then three mitigation programs as well Natasha will talk about. So I proposed for our housing recovery programs. I'll talk a little bit about this more. We're going to have one that focuses on homeowners and then one that focuses on rentals. But they will function very, very similarly how they're set up and implemented. Eligible activities, of course, rehabbing and reconstruction of your house. A wide range of different housing types will be available. Single-family home, townhouses, condos, manufactured homes and mobile homes as well. And a part of that will be clearance and demolition as well. And then for the housing portion, not the rental portion, eligible applicants will be people who were, who lived in the property at the time of the disaster. Obviously, the property must have sustained damages during the disaster itself. And we also want to work with HOAs or condo townhome associations, co-ops, little home park cooperatives. They'll be able to apply on behalf of their residences, their residents as well. So kind of trying to break down, if you remember, thinking about how one of the focuses and restraints that HUD gives us is that we have to spend 70% of the funds on low to moderate income people in the area. So this is kind of a breakdown of how we want to set up these programs. Hopefully, the colors are showing up there. But grant amounts highlighted in green, they'll, they'll be explicitly using the CBGDR funds, which we're talking about right now, for rehab and reconstruction. However, there will be funds for, and loan amounts for higher income households in blue. And as Dave touched upon, touched upon a little earlier, that'll be coming from that state-run program, the Disaster Resilience Rebuilding Program. And we may do some loans. And we may do some loans, you'll see highlighted in the yellow, depending on the funding amounts for lower income households as well. But really focusing on those LMI numbers, but also keeping in mind that we do have the state funds as well that have more flexibility. And kind of going, you know, AMI, LMI, area median income, AMI, and this is a look at Boulder County itself, which is the area that we're working in, HUD designated. Guys have probably seen some of this information before, but keeping in mind that Boulder County's median family income is over $125,000. This gives a breakdown as well. We'll have the presentation available for you to take, just in case you need to look at this again. And the other aspect of that whole housing recovery program will be focusing on the rental units and reconstruction. Posing this $600,000 for that, the maximum award of $50,000. And like I mentioned, it'll operate very similarly to the homeowner program, wanting to function same and be efficient. One aspect of one aspect of this that does differ from the homeowner rebuilding program is that HUD requires a period of affordability when you're doing any type of work on rental units. And this next slide will kind of go over what that actually means. So these are the home investment partnership program requirements from HUD. So if you receive, you know, less than $15,000, you'll have to have a minimum affordability period of five years, fifteen to forty thousand, ten years, more than forty thousand, fifteen years. Because we really want this program to be used in a meaningful way and making sure people will be able to be able to move back into those rental units. Just a reminder, again, we're going to be taking questions and comments at the end of the presentation. Just wanted to give a quick reminder, we passed out cards for you to write down your questions on. And then I will hand it over to my colleague Natasha, who will talk about some of the mitigation programs.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Natasha Albert, and I'm the Resilient Recovery Manager for DOLA. I'm here to go over the proposed mitigation programs that we had as part of the CDBGDR program. So as you can see here, we have three different programs. And I want to point out that this amount here, this $967,000 is fifteen percent that we require to spend on mitigation. That these programs are, were produced based on community input that we've heard on our own analysis of the needs that exist for community members as well as local governments. And again, these are proposed, but we're hoping that they kind of capture where the needs are in terms of mitigation. So moving forward, everyone is more protected and more resilient in the face of future disasters. So the first program I want to talk about is the Wind and Wildfire Housing Protection Program. It's a total allotment of $370,000. And this program provides additional measures to protect against future wind and wildfire events. Additional is important because it can be in addition to the housing recovery programs that are already being stood up. So it's an add-on essentially. We're prioritizing structures, and really, we're talking manufactured housing and mobile homes that are vulnerable to high wind events. We did look at the Boulder County Hazard Mitigation Plan. They're predicting that there's an annual occurrence of high wind events. And we know that mobile homes can be very vulnerable to these events. So we want to make sure that we're addressing this need as we move into a future where these events are becoming more likely. So the maximum award is $10,000 per household. And if you notice, there's a breakdown in between these two events. There's two programs. There's a low to moderate income household, which we're focusing on here. This HUD does require us to spend seventy percent of our funds on low to moderate income households. So we think that this program can really help those communities that are impacted by high wind events and are so are low to moderate income. And then, once we help that community, the next phase will be funding for households that are up to 120% AMI area median income. So it's that table that we'll reference earlier. So the way that we're going to approach this is local governments can apply as part of a county or municipality-wide initiative to provide home partying measures to mobile homes. Home partying just means we're protecting you more from these events. So your structure is strengthened against wind and wildfires. Individual households can also opt in to the program when they apply for the rebuilding funds. So when you apply for the recovery funds, you can choose to opt in to this housing protection program. And again, we have mobile home park associations, resident on communities, homeowner associations, and co-ops may apply on behalf of their residents. And again, this program is open to households at 120% AMI or less. The next program that we're proposing is an infrastructure assistance grant program. This program is designed to help the local government specifically deal with the mitigation projects that existed before the disaster. And ultimately, more mitigation projects that come after the disaster related to infrastructure. So it could be used to enhance existing programs. If you go into your community's hazard mitigation plan, they'll show you the programs that they're looking at that can help support infrastructure resiliency, let's say. And that's what we looked after this program. And it's also been in larger scale projects that we're just hoping to support. We're not going to pay for the whole thing, but we want to support that because again, we don't have that much money, right? So for this program, we have $267,000, and we want to support however the local government feels that their infrastructure can best be prepared for the next disasters. The maximum award for this is $267,000. So if you go to one project, that's what we think is the best use of the money. Now, how we're going to determine those projects is going to be a conversation with our long-term recovery working group. This is a weekly group that we meet with that has local recovery managers as well as representatives from the community-led recovery groups. And we can work and talk with them to help identify and prioritize projects that best fit what we hope this program can provide. The eligible applicants are the city of Louisville, the town of Superior, and Boulder County. So these are the local governments that will be applying for this. And we would love it if we could have a project where all three of those municipalities are involved, and we'll prioritize that. So just an example of some of the eligible activities are a local match for a hazard mitigation grant program, which is a FEMA program. And you have to go through a lot of process, and the local governments have to provide 10%, and FEMA will provide 90%. But even that 10% is expensive. So that's eligible on these of these funds. You can also, if there is a mitigation project that we can fund fully or partially, and it's on the local government's list, let's say, a project that they're looking into, and maybe they've been scoping. That's also eligible. And we can also use it to incorporate resilience measures on public assistance projects from this disaster that do not have adequate funds. The final program is really then something that I think we've heard from the local governments as well as community members that they would like to address, and it's the resilience planning and education and capacity building grant. And the goal of this program is really to reduce long-term risks and increase local resilience, which really is the ability to bounce back from adverse events. And we do that through community education and planning efforts. So we've been hearing, you know, conversations about, we would like a comprehensive wildfire mitigation plan. If that's something that the community wants to do, these grants, this money is eligible for that. So again, it can support activities such as plan making, but it must focus on local risk. Local, in this case, would be Boulder County. And that could be that, you know, this money could be used that the local municipalities just need additional staff to get this going. That's also an option, or they could hire a consultant to help work out these plans. Again, this is something that's made it flexible. And I think that really, this is, probably, it goes a lot of ways that this could go, and community input will be really involved in this space. So with that, I'll turn it back to us.
Yeah, so looking at program next steps, what we're going to be doing after this meeting. Obviously, going to continue working with that long-term recovery working group. And then the public comment period is now open from the seventeenth today until September 16th. And we will be incorporating feedback into the action plan and submit that to HUD by September 19th. We'll have to address every comment. So, you know, if you don't have one today, I'll show them the next slide. There'll be ways for you to contact us and provide that information. And then HUD has 60 days to approve or reject the action plan. So we're estimating October, November of this year for them to approve the action plan. And then really anticipating the CDBGDR, these federal funds, be available by January 2023. But as I mentioned earlier, we do have the state-run programs. Those will be able to start sooner, so we can start kind of front-loading some of the projects into there as well. So for the CDBGDR, January 2023, but sooner than that for those state funds. And then we'll, we'll provide this information for you as well. But for the 30-day public comment period, we have a website for the program. And this information will be on the website as well. But we also have an online comment forum, a Google form, you'll be able to submit comments and questions, and that we have to address. We also have an email address set up. Feel free to email your questions and comments to that address as well. And then also, you have the option of getting in to me at our office in Denver, 1313 Sherman. Okay, now kind of begins the Q and A portion of this public meeting. So my colleague can have a question.
We've got fifty-six folks online, and they're submitting questions as well. So I'm going to be going back and forth with your questions here in the room and some of the questions that we've gotten here online. So maybe I'll just start with the question, the obvious question people are asking. Will this be recorded, is this recording and the slides be available after the meeting? And yes, they will. And it will be available on our website. So you can look for that probably tomorrow. It should be posted and available. So are there any questions here from the audience, any cards that you'd like to, maybe we could have somebody? Allison, would you be so kind to collect any cards? And I'm going to kind of be going back and forth while you're getting organized. I will start with some questions here online. So there is a question, some clarifying questions from the presentation. Brooke Mann has asked, has DOLA determined or estimated what percentage of Marshall Fire victims will qualify for the Green Development Grant Funds based on low and moderate income requirements? So if there's a summary from the presentation, sometimes repetition is very important. Dave or anyone, if you'd like to take that one, stand right up. And, and we did get feedback online that is, sound quality is better than closer. You stand to this little guy here, the owl.
Yeah, so we do have preliminary estimates based on census data and what's come in from FEMA on how many have that eighty percent and below. It's about out of the roughly eleven or 1,200 homes, there's only about a hundred that meet that eighty percent or lower. The, the part that we're less sure of is that eighty percent to 120%. And again, that's, that's part of our rationale for combining these programs, because if you don't fall in that area or you're on the border, you can still be eligible for the long portion of the program. And we do have grants for those people that are above eighty percent. We don't really have a good handle on who falls into that middle range, just because the, the census isn't as clear on that. But again, we're limited to thirty percent of the dollars going to those folks. But that doesn't mean don't apply, because you may be funded out of the state pot of money. And then I also want to be clear on how these programs work together as a single application. We may have two households that are the exact same situation. Let's say they're at 110%. So they could get money from our program, or they could get money from another program. You know, you might get money from CDBGDR, your neighbor that has the exact same income qualifications and the exact same needs, might get funded from the state. It just kind of depends on, you know, what money is available at what time.
Hope that helps answer the question. It's very important.
All right, I'm going to be answering a question from the room here. Thank you, Peggy and Doretta. So the comment question is, San Suti is a C1 unit resident-owned community. The Marshall disaster destroyed power lines and half the homes without power had frozen and ongoing water pipe issues. Three homes lost roofs in the 108-mile winds. We still struggle with the expense, fixing the expenses. Three homes are going to cost approximately eight, eighty thousand each, pipe replacements, insulation, et cetera. And expenses will raise everyone's shared rent. The park is a portable living park. Half the population are seniors on fixed incomes. One resident is disabled and cannot work. This park needs a lot of help. Thank you, Peggy. And another comment from Doretta, kind of expressing similar needs. So you've heard a little bit in the presentation, reference to this, and Allison O'Kelly from our Division of Housing is going to respond.
Thanks. I'm assuming I'm loud enough, because no one's ever told me I wasn't, but Tim, let me know if they can't hear me online. So part of the reason we've tried to make this as flexible seating as we can is because we know that the residents of both of the mobile home parks have had the kind of impacts that are the hardest to respond to, because you're not just replacing a unit. So it's likely some of the units that have had pretty significant damage, instead of repairing them, it may be the most cost-effective thing to actually remove the unit and just replace it with a new one. Because then it will come more weather hardy, like Natasha was talking about to start with. And it'll be easier to get those utility connections improved while the units are gone. I think what we anticipate may happen is that you might do an application from the park together. And will the, at the nonprofit that's going to manage the housing rebuilding program will review that all at once. That way, you're all, all of the units that have any amount of damage are kind of looked at together. And then help you collectively figure out what is the smartest thing to do, which may be, and this is me speculating, not having looked at it, that it is to remove most of the units that sustain damage while they are gone, make those utility system improvements, which probably will fall under that housing mitigation program for making the park itself have more, I guess, weather hardy infrastructure. That way, once all of that work is done, the units that are replaced can be connected to a stronger infrastructure. I'm not positive that's what'll happen, but we're trying to foresee the most complicated thing that needs to happen being possible without having to monkey around with the way we design the programs. It is possible there are units that maybe all they do need is like redone skirting and stronger utility connections. If that's the case, that's definitely possible. The reason I started with the possibility that units will need to be removed and replaced is because of the likelihood that the value of them, after they've sustained this damage, is going to be less than, at least, but it's probably going to be more than half that amount of what they're worth to repair them. So then, at that point, it's more cost-effective to just replace them, because then you don't have to worry about making additional repairs, you know, in the next couple of years when more wind comes along. But there may well be also a few units that really just need minor rehab. And the program is really designed to try to span that whole continuum. So hopefully, that answered everything you're looking for and seeing a lot of picknights. So just start me under the light.
All right, thank you, Allison. All right, we'll go back online here and okay, referring to the, this is anonymous attendee, referring to the action plan timeline and the timeframes noted. When do you anticipate funds will start rolling out and into use in the community? Looking at, oh, who wants to take this?
Yeah.
All right, Will.
I'll fix that about it. Yeah, so based on the timeline, we're hoping to have everything approved by January. End of December would be End of December would be like a really good stretch, but funds will be available in January for this program.
I'm going to add to that a little bit. If you come and apply through the recovery navigators, the state money is going to be available first. And we've written into our action plan that we're allowed to go ahead and disperse state money and repay it back with federal money. So that'll save us a couple of months and we should be able to get those programs rolling prior to that January date. So that's our strategy to kind of streamline and get them to.
All right. All right, a question from the room here. What do you consider double dipping at the May second presentation? If I heard that there was an allocation of seven million and another in another allocation in twenty, so twenty twenty-two, and then another one, seven million allocation in twenty twenty-two. So there may be a couple questions in there. So there is just one allocation, and that is the, what we're talking about today. There's not a second allocation. So like, I, I know that one.
Partially referring to the state C B G and then partially to the perpetual D R R. Is that what the question is about the multiple funding sources?
And if you have a, if you want to clarify.
Well, I was at the May two. And I thought I heard that there was seven million that was already appropriated for this kind of recovery. And that there would be another appropriation next year.
Yeah, that.
Let me clarify. So another slide.
Yeah, that's a good call.
No, you're, 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 you're mostly right, actually. Let me get to the slide with the. That's to keep.
One more, one more forward.
It's fine. There he is, stop. The C B G housing set aside is, and when we had this conversation in May, we thought this would be a lot easier than it's turned out to be. But what we're doing is we're taking our annual, we get C B G money every year. It is not for disasters and it's designed to go to any local government that doesn't get their own allocation directly from HUD. So we're taking that annual money and we're setting aside six million of that to also serve the same population. And that'll give us some flexibility. If you don't have enough money through D R to serve those households, we'll have some more money here. Now, we thought this was going to be an easy HUD approval. We're getting a waiver. Probably more than you need to know, but this is the difference between the state running a program and identifying a local government that has to run it. Senator Bennett's office is involved, the Deuce's office is involved. They're writing a letter to HUD to kind of try to expedite that process. I'm not losing too much sleep over it because I think the waiver is going to come and we're going to be fine. And there's a backup plan if we're not. But because we have this twelve million dollars coming first, I'm less worried about, I'm disappointed, but the timeliness of this isn't going to set us back. This is going to be the first money out. Anyways, but you're right, we do have two different funding sources. They're both from HUD and they're supplementing.
And Steve, if I can chime in on the C B G, how do they set aside? So that second row, that's specifically money that has been set aside just specifically for housing, unlike the C B G D R money that can kind of, if need be, be shifted from housing to infrastructure that thus far has only been set aside for housing. That would take more creativity if we decide to use it for something else than it would for the C B G D R. So we're planning on it all being used for housing.
And that double dipping was a different question, you know, because somebody mentioned that and, you know, everybody's worried, you know, what do you need? I mean, if I take insurance money, is that double dipping? That's what SBA does.
It's, it's only considered double dipping if the money that you get exceeds the money that you need. So when you go through the, the application process, they're going to look at all that. They're going to look at your rebuild costs. They're going to look at your insurance. They're going to look at community foundation money, unfortunately is included in that. From what I've heard from most people, that gap is larger than all these funding sources put together. So most of you are probably not going to run into that issue.
All right, thank you. Going back online here, a question from Lisa Hughes about household size. And so the question specifically was if the college age children that live with them part-time and they declare them as dependents, does that count as a family of four on the AMI chart? For the household size chart? Is that a question that anyone has the answer to right now? Some of these we may need to go look into, but. Oh, sure. Yeah. It's a household size and a question about. Right here. Yeah.
Oh, I'm seeing. Okay. It's complicated with the college thing. Unfortunately, if you're, if you're listing a person as a dependent on your taxes, if you're paying for their living expenses and they live in your home, most of the time while going to school, they would be considered part of your household. But if they entirely live at another location where they have a lease or in the dorms, then they don't really get to be considered part of your household. So whoever asked that question, if you want to come talk to me afterwards, then we will get into the specific leads for your household. I can answer this probably better. But in general, I would say if they mostly live in your house, you're claiming them as a dependent, they'd be considered part of your household for determining how many people are in your households. I think it's probably the best short answer.
Yeah. Okay, this question is from here. Is, is the income based grants awards based on income at the time of the fire or when you apply?
It's when you apply.
When you apply, okay. Back online, Dan Peters has a question. It's, I'm going to read this, have a little more context. So some of us in the Marshall area of unincorporated Boulder County have been talking to local agencies about how we can improve the firefighting capabilities in our area, given the apparent shortage of firefighter, firefighting water in the area during the fires. The most feasible options identified to date include building systems to store water and fire truck refilling stations nearby. Two or three large volume systems would be strategically located, potentially on open space or private land in the community, while the fill stations would be located at the ends of the nearby municipal treated water systems. So the question is, would it be possible to obtain a portion of the funding being discussed this evening to help fund the evaluation, design and construction of this type of firefighting infrastructure?
So I would say with this particular project, I think if we're talking about infrastructure, the entities that are eligible to apply are the local governments. So it's city of Louisville, town of Superior and Boulder County. If that is on their project list of a hazard mitigation project that they want to move forward with, that could be part of a conversation we can have and they could technically apply for these fundings. But what I'm understanding now is this would be a community led program or a community group would have to apply and they are not eligible for infrastructure. It might be eligible for the, sorry, I should come up by the microphone. The housing mitigation program, since we specifically allow homeowner associations and mobile home park cooperatives, et cetera. If it is resident owned and they have to provide their own utility system, which it sounds like this would be their privately owned community's system, it's plausible that could be eligible with that program. But I think we'd need to know more about it to be sure. But I could see the possibility. So reiterate, there is a possibility if it's on privately owned land, residential.
Residential, but on open space?
Then in that case, then that's public and it's not the same kind of structure.
So you all can follow up with myself and send me an email and we can get more into. Thank you. Okay, another question from the room. Well, those who have had major income changes due to the fire qualify for the lower income brackets. I've had to reduce my hours at work to deal with fire recovery. How will new incomes be calculated?
So in terms of household income, these are the income limits we're talking about. When we say that these funds from CDBGDR can be used for households up to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, this is the income cap we're talking about for households. The way that we calculate income, I'm going to try to keep this the like most concise version because HUD doesn't give you easily explainable versions, is what's called part five of the Housing and Community Development Act. It was designed to calculate income for giving a housing choice voucher, section eight, to someone who's getting subsidy for their apartment. It basically calculates their gross income or all of the income they get before you subtract things for withholdings. It's before you take out taxes. So that's basically the amount that you report on your taxes before they charge you the tax. It generally speaking, if you're retired, it's going to be the income you take from whatever retirement accounts or social security you get, plus a very less than one percent of the amount you have sitting waiting for you to draw from your retirement. So pretty minor. So it's called imputing a percentage of your assets. It's less than one percent. If you are not yet retired, it uses all your wage income plus less than one percent calculation of what you have in your retirement assets, if you have that. But it's always less, if it's, if you have less than five thousand dollars in assets, whether that's savings, retirement accounts, that's not counted at all. So that's like the short version of what's included in your income, which probably you should be able to figure out as what is determined to be your gross income on your taxes. And I can probably answer more questions about that after. I think that should answer most of them.
And, and we will stay afterwards if you need to follow up or there's more of a, you know, individual question you want to work in. All right, I'm going back online here. Michelle has a question about, are there any area benefit projects that will qualify as low moderate income in Boulder County?
So Michelle obviously is familiar with HUD speak and what that means. I'll translate that a little bit for you. You saw that the infrastructure programs where some of that money has to go to low and moderate income areas. Normally what we do is we look at census tract data and there are certain areas that, that qualify based on census data. In Boulder County, we don't have any of those. However, if we're looking at an area, let's say, let's say we wanted to do something in San Sutti that was with the infrastructure dollars, like, you know, hardening that infrastructure there. What we do is we do a survey of that area. And if fifty-one percent of them met the standard, we could call it L M or low and moderate income area. The distinction is with our housing programs, you're looking at an individual household. With our business programs, we're looking at individuals. With infrastructure, we're typically looking at areas. So the short answer is no L M A areas in Boulder County. However, we can do a survey for smaller, more targeted areas that could meet that qualification.
Another question from the room. Yeah, thank you. So she is appreciative that we are including condos and HOAs. And the question is, how can the HOA apply on behalf of residents if it's income, if, wait, if it's based on income? So this may be Allison O'Shea's multitouch. So, so the question is for condos and HOAs, how can the HOA apply on behalf of residents if it's income based?
So yes, that's complicated. I think probably the, the opportunity for this to work well is likely to be more with a mobile home park cooperative where it's park owned and, or resident owned, and you're already aware of what everybody's income level is collectively, because you're charging rents based on income for people already. If it's an HOA, that's going to be more complicated. We will definitely, or not weeds, that agency, the nonprofit that's going to run the program will still need income source documents per household. But if there's, it's possible. I think the reason we're trying to make this possible is because it's possible that an HOA might apply. So all of the residents have basically the same couple of house designs to choose from. And then all of the rebuilding be done kind of in one bulk project where the HOA would hire a contractor to do all the rebuilding for all the homes in that area if all the residents want to participate. So it would save effort on putting into the application what those design plans are, permitting and that stuff. But we would still need applications to come in with the household's individual income information to determine they're eligible. So probably the savings of effort is on the design side and getting plans group side. And I think dollar amount of cost estimating for the rebuilding, if you have a couple of different designs in mind.
We can break up the clarified question.
Sure. So these are the condos just over there and they're.
Oh, we're doing the HOA. But I know there's a couple of units that also heard that HUD right for doing them. So I know that there's also that difference. Does that have any implications for how the HOA would?
Excuse me, I can't hear.
I'm going to repeat her question. I'm glad you asked. So the short version, and I want you to nod at me or shake your head if I'm not repeating this well, is that she's talking about a condo property that's not too far away from where we're standing right now. That is, all of the individual units are individually owned. Most of them are owner occupied. Some of them are owned by a person who's part of the condo association, but they rent out their unit. A couple of the units were, did sustain fire damage, but most of them, it was more wind or smoke. Oh, no, it was all, okay. Oh, they're gone in total. In total. Okay, thank you for clarifying. So her question was, will there be a distinction between how the rebuilding works if some of the units were renter occupied at the time it burns and intend to be renter occupied again after it's rebuilt? Did I repeat all that right? Sir, did you hear me? Okay, on the other end? Hopefully, okay. That is complicated. If they were all owner occupied, it would be a really straightforward answer. Because some of them are renter occupied, if, you can't not rebuild the whole building. So the two owners of the units who were renting in order to have their units rebuilt and be able to rent them out would have to agree that they would only rent them out to households who are income qualified at or below eighty percent of the area median income. And they would have to restrict how much rent they charge, which currently, I was prepared for this part of this question. Currently in Boulder County, for a one bedroom unit, they would not be able to charge more than one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars a month. That will change next year. That's the cap on a one bedroom at eighty percent of AMI. For a two bedroom, it's twenty-two hundred fifty-eight dollars and it goes on up. So those two unit owners or however many would have to agree to that or would have to plan on living there. At like, we, we don't have the luxury of being creative because we have to restrict incomes for rental units for HUD. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the question is, how long do they have to agree to that?
So the slide that Will showed earlier, that says, so this is the dollar amount of the CDBGDR funds that go into rebuilding that specific unit, not into the whole property. So it would be. So it would be five years and it's 15,000 or less and so on.
All right, we'll go back online to Beth. Um, her question is, um, some clarity over is this program the same as the one that the Boulder County Community Foundation has set up? And the second part of the question is, will the recovery navigator, navigators be helping us obtain the money? I know the answer to that. So, um, the answer is yes. Um, um, in terms of the recovery navigators, they will be having the information about all of the different programs and be directing impacted residents to the correct resource to help them. Uh, so we're all collaborating, state, local and the foundation to make this as seamless as possible to impacted folks. So, um, that is a partnership that's happening and that is the intent. Um, and it is a, what we're talking about tonight is a different pot of money than what the community foundation has raised. But we will be working collaboratively through the recovery navigators to, uh, again, help you all understand the different sources you're eligible for and access all the funding that makes sense for you. All right, um, are there any other more, any other cards that are coming in from the room here? Okay. I will keep going here with some questions, um, here online. All right. Sometimes this moves around a bit. Okay. Um, for someone working to rebuild their home, how should or could they budget for their rebuild based on what's proposed in this presentation? As in, what is a realistic use case for households and this fund?
I will, I'll take a stab at that. And I think the question is, and this is, you know, I've been talking to homeowners, kind of going through this right now is they're trying to figure out how big to build their house or should I build a ranch? Should I build a split level? So I think until we have either, um, if you don't have construction plans yet, you're really at that base. You don't have an architect, you don't have anywhere to go. Um, I would say go through the recovery navigators, talk to that case manager and they can help you understand based on what you lost, how much money you'll be eligible for. And they'll also have some insights on, you know, how you can save money. If it looks like it's not going to be enough and you maybe need to remodel and, uh, go with either a smaller footprint or go with the different size. I know we have a lot of retirees in the area you may be looking at. You know what? I want a, a ranch style now because the stairs are killing me. Or maybe they're, they're ready to downsize, but, um, you know, the individual case manager can help them with that.
I think the only thing I have to add is that the nonprofit agency we're anticipating will administer this program is going to be using an electronic construction cost estimator, which we know can be varying degrees of reliable. So they're, uh, deliberately going to be programming in information that they pull from property records about what the house square footage was, the number of bedrooms, et cetera, before it was lost as a starting point to say, okay, this is what we potentially are rebuilding. Then they build into the specification assumptions, what, uh, the construction standard, meaning like what kind of finishes? Federal funds are not going to pay for permits. They're not allowed to. Homeowners can pay to upgrade that stuff, but there are certain things that are considered luxury finishes to HUD. So they're going to build in the standards that we're allowed to pay them to pay to build. And then come, that will come out with based on what current per square foot construction is costing to build in this area and what material costs are in that particular month, what labor costs are. It builds in all of that to spit out an estimate that I'm just going to come out with a number that's not correct on purpose because I am not using the software right now. But let's say it's a 2,000 square foot house that the construction cost estimate comes out at $400,000. I'm sure that is wrong in several regards. Um, but for the sake of the scenario, if that's what comes out, they'll share that information with the applicant household and say, okay, here's what, if we rebuild your house pretty much the way it was, here's how much it would cost. You've already told us you have X dollars from your insurance. You got X dollars from FEMA. If you have an SBA loan and you can afford to repay all of it, you have this much to use for it and the gap left over is X. And X is what these programs are trying to fill. So if in doing that calculation together with you and the navigator, what comes out is there's more gap than this money can fill. They will talk with you about whether there are some things that you would like to downgrade about the size of your house or what other funding options you may have at your disposal. It's very much a discussion of what makes sense for your household and what money is available. Um, I think that's probably as far as I can get.
Um, another question from Michelle. Um, while you have six years, while you have six years for this grant, do you expect to complete these programs sooner? It seems that you won't have enough funding to administer a grant for six years.
I think that, um, yeah, we're not going to take the full six years to do this. And we'll handle the administration of it. It's, I know this is a lesson we usually have, but, um, we can also combine it with other administrative funding sources. It's not something we teach in every.
Thank you. Um, another question online here from Anne Marie. Um, wondering about the ratio of funding for residential homeowners for residential landlords and how that percentage was determined?
You repeat the question.
Yeah, so, uh, she's asking about the ratio of funding for home, homeowners and landlords.
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can tackle that. Based on the, the data that we're seeing both from FEMA and from census, uh, it looks like almost 90% of the homes are owner occupied and about 10% were renter occupied. So that's where those, those ratios came from.
Um, there is a request from Audrey to put the AMI table back on the screen to review it again, so.
I've done it a couple of times.
Okay, okay. So anyway, we've, we've been, thank you, Tim. Um, AJ has a question. Uh, could you? So what AJ has a question, um, there's a couple in here. What happens with people that lost income on their jobs due to COVID? Um, thus can't qualify for FEMA or SBA, SBA funds. Um, and there is a second part of that question. Um, will the funds completely cover retaining malls that benefit the community? So this is a two-part question from AJ. Uh, the first one is on, uh, lost income. Yeah, I'm not sure I didn't want to.
Allison, you're probably.
Let me read that again.
Yeah, yeah.
Also trying to figure out if this is an AJ, I know. That's complicated. So for people who lost income or lost their job due to COVID, uh, I don't know as much the ins and outs of whether you qualify for FEMA or not for that, to be honest. So I'm definitely going to look into this unless someone else in the room has more information about it to make sure we can clarify on that. I do know if you don't qualify for FEMA or SBA funds, then those funds, if you got a rejection letter, that is something that you're going to give to the navigator and would get submitted with your application for assistance to determine that is one less source of funds you have at your disposal. And leads you more in need of this program, basically. Um, and then will funds completely cover retaining walls that benefit the community? Assuming those are on public property, that's potentially part of the infrastructure mitigation program. If they're on private property, that would potentially be part, are eligible for the housing mitigation program. So I think either way, that seems likely. Yeah, no, go ahead.
As long, in regards to the retaining wall, as long as the retaining wall is, begins and ends on one individual parcel, then in its own private property, that's eligible. If there's retaining walls that cross multiple parcels and serve the same purpose, but are not on, on public lands, then that's something that I don't know if that would be eligible for the program because it doesn't fit the standards.
Yeah. I think, yeah, if it's on private property and it's protecting housing, it seems likely, yeah. Did AJ say anything else after? Here's the therapist, follow up to that if I can. Andrew would make sense, but I guess.
Okay. Okay, another question from Michelle. Um, could you expand on how the state arrived at the 330,000 in resilience planning and education figure? Housing rehabilitation and reconstruction seems like a much greater need based on the unmet needs figures. Yeah, so just how did we arrive on, um, the, the funding? And this is for the mitigation, um, resilience planning and education figure, um, versus.
Sure, so we got to the number of 330,000, 100,000 based on conversations that we have with the community and the priorities that they felt, were net, their priorities basically with these mitigation dollars. Keeping in mind that it's $967,000 and we felt that there was a lot of feedback from the locals that they wanted more planning processes around wildfire mitigation specifically. But also the local governments were aligned with that. So we use that as about a third of the budget to address what we heard from the local communities.
All right, we've got another question, um, about household, how household incomes are calculated and at what period? Also, how are multiple households who are living in one destroyed house? Um, when does, in one destroyed house dealt with in calculating the incomes? This is another household income calculation. We responded to some of this in the past, but maybe Alison, you can just, yes.
How are household incomes calculated and at what period? So, uh, income is going to be calculated based on what the household's income is at the time they apply. So you're going to provide a couple of months worth of the most recent pay stubs, retirement, disbursement statements, et cetera. Um, if you own a business and your income is difficult to document, then we would be saying, give us your business taxes that show how much you take as your own pay for the last year. Um, if your income decreased sometime in the last year and you're able to show bank statements showing that decrease in revenue with profit and loss statements, those are acceptable documents. The agency that's going to be administering this program knows lending and housing a lot and they do a good job of looking at people's income appropriately to help them get a mortgage, et cetera, because they want to make sure that they're looking at what your income really is to not leave you in a position where your mortgage is more than you can afford or that you're winding up taking on debt to rebuild your house that you can't afford to repay. They, they're definitely going to look at every option available to help you document your income accurately, especially if it's changed, you know, in the last year. Um, and so how are multiple households who are living in one destroyed house dealt with in calculating the income? I'm going to say that if they are still dwelling together uh, and their intent is to keep doing that when they rebuild, they can be treated as one household. So if there are, you know, two couples, for example, who have been living in the same place before and they intend to rebuild a house and the two couples that they're together again, they would be treated as one households. If they were previously, you know, two couples living together, but they don't intend to proceed that way, then it needs to be taken into account the people who are intending to rebuild and figuring out how the people who aren't going to continue as part of the household take their part of the income away. Um, but it, I guess it gets complicated depending per situation, but there, it's going to be based on who the intent is to live there at the time and who is acting as a household together when you apply. I think it's the best shorty answer.
Okay, don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere. I'll just stand back here.
Okay. Um, Kate's got a question here in the room. Navigators, uh, the recovery navigators had said that retirement funds didn't vector into the gap calculations for grant or loans, just to clarify.
Uh, so that's the complicated thing about explaining it earlier with the HUD part five income determination. If your sole source of income is retained, drawing from a retirement account or social security, uh, because you're a type, are a retiree, the income that you actually take, that definitely is what is considered your income. Uh, if you're not retired, what you're taking home is income, is what's calculated as your income. The requirement that this calculation method has to use a small percentage of whatever assets you have, so checking, savings account, retirement accounts. If the sum value of those accounts, whatever kind they are, is valued at more than $5,000, the amount worth more than $5,000. So if you have $20,000 in savings, you only care about 15,000 of it. Point 06% of that $15,000 is considered part of your income. So that's why I'm saying it's less than one percent of the total value. If you have $10 million in a retirement account, yes, it's going to definitely impact how your income is determined, but you're not trying to qualify as low mod income anyway. If you have $10 million in a retirement account, I think. And I think that's the best I can explain it. Uh, this person is welcome to submit really explicit questions. I'm happy to help try. Is this where, and I know this was going to, but I know it's another one like that.
Okay, thank you.
Should I go away or stay? I'll just keep saying, you're, you're kind of popular here with the question.
It happens. So let's see, um, just a reminder, Tim, if you, or you wrap the comments.
No, we have to change the permissions after we're done here.
Okay.
So that folks can explain, put in a comment.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay. Um, so this is another one. This is from Joe and it relates to some of what you already said about how do you determine what AMI category you fall into?
So in that case, it, I would say the easiest way to do it is if your income has not changed since the fire, I would look at what your gross income is that you reported on your taxes before you start calculating deductions and credits. That's probably the shortest way to determine it, the income for your whole households. If you, uh, that's the most unreliable way to calculate it because the IRS may decide to reject your taxes and adjust them. And we don't want you to be in the position of accidentally over reporting your income on your taxes and that being what's used to determine your income. So that's kind of the last resort method to use on purpose. Because if you use pay stubs and, you know, statements from your retirement earnings and, you know, social security or disability, those, you can concretely see that's how much money came into my bank account. So those are what's used to calculate. You can do that yourself, but that's more work. So the starting point I would say is just to check and see where you fall. Look at what your taxes had last year.
Okay. Michael Pierce has a question. Um, referring back to a slide listing that low income homeowners could qualify for 50,000 in grants and 50,000 in loans. Are these additive? That is, will they qualify for potentially 100,000 in funding or grant or loan?
I love that I can just say, yes, that is correct. I will say, if you qualify for $50,000 grants, your income needs to be able to support repaying however much loan you get. So the possibility of qualifying for a grant and also getting a $50,000 loan, that depends on how much other debt you already have and how much your mortgage payment is, et cetera.
Okay, great. All right. Yeah. Um, are you going to? Are you going to 1099 the funds you give to individuals? That's question number one. And question number two, I'll handle after that.
Yeah. To my knowledge, after the 2013 floods, using the same source of funds, no, we did not 1099 folks. If you apply as a business, I can't speak to that and we will have someone else answer that question in writing afterwards, I think, right?
Actually, I know the answer. Homeowners, no. Businesses, yes.
That's easy.
The second part of the question is, a lot of us have dollars we have gotten from insurance for personal property, which will boost our bank accounts that you will look at when we apply.
Great question. I wish I had read this question before the conversation about assets a minute ago. If you have documentation from your insurance that says, we're going to send you a check for this dollar amount, you're going to provide a copy of that letter when you apply for assistance and you're going to, you're going to give them copies of a couple of months' bank statements so that they can verify how much you say you have in income. It's going to show, I would hope, a deposit of the dollar amount that matches that amount on the letter from your insurance in your account. They're going to take that out of what they consider to be an asset. So when they calculate your assets based on what's in your account, if you have, I don't know, if you had $10,000 in savings before you got $100,000 from your insurance, they're only going to count the $10,000, the $100,000, they're going to treat that as, here's this other source of money available to you. Sorry how Italian I am. This is what I do it the most.
Okay. Let's see here, I'll take another one from the audience here. If the plan needs to be modified to target a different unmet need, such as infrastructure versus housing, how is that assessment made? Will there be another public comment period and round of HUD approval? And do you have to go through another period of public comment and HUD approval if the plan is modified? Dave?
There's a, there's a threshold, there's two different kinds of amendments. There's a substantial amendment, when it's a big change, and then there's a non-substantial amendment, but it's a little change. In our case, if we're going to move more than $1 million, we do another meeting like this, we do another 30 days. If it's not substantial, then it's a much easier, more streamlined process. Now, we're not going to make any of these changes without consulting the local governments and the folks that are impacted. So if we are going to make a change like that, where we're taking money out of housing and putting it in infrastructure, it's going to be because we've had the program open for a while and there just aren't enough people applying or maybe the regular program takes care of the low, moderate income people, so we have this other flexibility. But that's generally that distinction between substantial.
Second part of this question is, can the same applicant receive housing and mitigation programs? Is it a duplication?
The mitigation housing program is what I'm going to answer that about, and then somebody else can answer about the other part. If you're getting assistance from the housing rebuilding program and you apply in the course of that for the mitigation housing program, those are intended to work together. So it's not considered a duplication. The regular housing rebuilding program is to basically a specific construction standard that meets all the local building codes and the construction requirements that HUD tells us we have to achieve with these dollars. The mitigation program is added on top of that to extra harden the home that we consider an add-on and it's not a duplication because if you add on those dollars, you're also adding on scope and a cost that those are covering. And then the non-housing part of the mitigation, I don't, the only way I can think of that is if you're applying.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't apply because that's only, the mitigation is for the local government. So this is another household size question. So why don't you, we want to read that out?
I have two kids. At the time of the Marshall Fire, one kid was a senior in high school and lived at home. This is going to be a fun story. The other kid was at home during Christmas break, but otherwise was living in the dorm. What is the size of our household for the grant? I am going to double-check what it says in the Part 5 regulations because I don't, if there's one thing everyone who knows me in this room knows, I don't guess. So I'm going to read and make sure I cite exactly what the answer to that is. I am positive that the senior in high school, if they are still living at home with you now and will live with you in the house that you're building, you're going to consider them part of your household and definitely a dependent. The one who was always, already living in the dorm, and if they're going to continue doing so, most of the time, I think they won't be included, but I want to make sure I have that correct and that I didn't miss any nuance. So I'll definitely get a more concrete answer.
Okay. We're getting down to kind of the last four or five questions here. So I'm just going to go through them here. So our, this is, our HOA, which is made up of residents, so it's resident, has responsibility for a perimeter fence. Would the HOA be able to apply for this fence to rebuild?
So, sorry, the fence is required by code?
It's a perimeter fence in the HOA.
I think we would, we would need to look at the building code requirements to determine whether that's a requirement to rebuild and get the residents, or to get everything cleared for occupancy or if that's considered a luxury finish in order to answer that question. I suspect not. Yeah, okay.
Next question, does one have to wait to submit a building permit to be able to work with the navigators and be able to apply for these grants?
One does not have to wait to talk to a navigator at all. One should start talking to a navigator tomorrow to be able to apply for the grants. To apply for the grants, that's a little more complicated. It depends on which funding source you're talking about. I can't speak to the requirements for the community foundation funds. For these programs, I don't think it's a bad idea to start talking to the housing navigator and see if you have enough applications to start submitting an application for the programs, the disaster recovery, rebuilding, and this program, once that application launches. Because, like I was talking about earlier, since they will use a construction cost estimator based on what the public record says your house was, they can help you start with that. If you haven't already started working on designs, that may help you decide what kind of design you want to do. So I don't think it hurts to start applying if you don't have a permit. And we're not quite taking applications yet for the state program, so I'm speaking about hopefully around the end of September, but I'm acting really uncomfortable about it on purpose because we don't have a pinpointed date yet. And then the CDBGDR fund yield, that'll be part of that same application once these funds are available.
We've got a couple of questions from Kathy regarding assets. At this time, I have several, she has the funding in the bank and has a payout from the insurance. That wouldn't be included in my assets, right?
So I think, yeah, so regarding assets, she has the several hundred thousand in the bank that she received from her insurance claim payment on this. So, yeah, so the example I gave earlier, what you have in savings, aside from the exact amount that you deposited from your insurance, is what would be counted as your assets. Whatever you're sitting on waiting to use from your insurance, that's not going to be considered part of your assets.
And then follow-up question, her. So she's also self-employed and was unemployed for the first five months of 2022 due to the fire. How does that unemployment income figure in?
So unemployment counts as income on your taxes. So it counts as income for any federally funded program and we're modeling the state funding program that same way so that these programs work the same way together and don't make it confusing for applicants. So the money that you bought is unemployment, that's absolutely considered as income. Whatever your business income was prior to going on unemployment and since unemployment, you'll want to provide that information and they will determine what your actual annual income projection is based on those used together. And that's why I was saying they really want to look at the picture to get that calculated correctly instead of overestimating your income.
All right. Do the funds have to be used to cover insurance gaps for the home rebuilding only? Or can they be used for other things, such as landscaping, personal possessions, et cetera? Could they be used for things outside of the rebuild?
This program cannot define or determine for you how you use your insurance proceeds. That is at the discretion of your insurance company. If they give you discretion to use that, but usually they give you an amount for the replacement of your housing rebuilding, hopefully, since they're required to, they give you a portion to use to help you with your living expenses somewhere else while you're displaced from your home that was damaged or destroyed. And there's, there's also usually the personal contents amount that is usually based on a percentage of what your house was insured for. So if your house is insured for 400,000, maybe like 130,000 is what they would give you for personal property, but you have to demonstrate to them what the value was of those contents.
Just a clarification, I think they're asking, can these funds?
Oh, I thought the question was can insurance?
No, no. So these funds, can they cover other things besides rebuilding?
Oh, then absolutely not. Yeah, sorry, sorry. Yeah. But what you use your insurance money on will be taken into account, calculating what your gap is. So if your insurance says this $130,000 is for replacing your contents and you use it for that and the balance is what you use for rebuilding, the part that they told you to use for contents, that doesn't get counted against you for rebuilding if you use it for that other purpose.
Got a question from Michael. Much of the costs that people are incurring are interim costs for storage, alternative lodging, et cetera, while they wait for the long-term funding to come online. Will there be any chance that those interim costs can be reimbursed by any of the state, federal, or community foundation funds? So the community foundation funds, we can't speak to. I think they're a lot more flexible. And I, so those can be used, as I understand it, as you see fit. And.
The CDBGDR, those are eligible costs as HUD allows. I think what I can accurately say at this point is for the housing rebuilding program, we haven't built in the intention of reimbursing those kind of costs because we have so little to begin with to help people pay for rebuilding costs. We didn't want to take more away from that to cover reimbursement of other things. I think what Dave was talking about, if it turns out, maybe that was well, that if it turns out that some of the programs that we budgeted for don't, don't have as big of a need and it turns out other programs are needed, these would be examples of things that could be eligible to be based on what the community needs and wants.
It looks like we're, oh, sorry.
I just want to add to that a little bit. You know, again, these aren't the only funds that are out there. And a lot of your, you know, local governments will have rental assistance programs and things of that nature that cover some of these things. But that is on the back of our mind in that, is that, you know, a year from now, people are going to start losing their ALE and they might not be rebuilt. And if we have money left there between the CBG and the CBGDR, it's kind of in our back of our minds that that might be something we would trigger. But at this point, I believe there's rental assistance assets out there through other sources that people are eligible for.
And, yeah, those, the rental assistance funds, those don't cover things like storage or moving costs, but the rental assistance funds that are still available to use for COVID response are still out there and that's part of why we didn't put some of this toward it, because we want to make sure those be used for that purpose first. Yeah.
Looks like the final question I've seen here is just a clarification from Sean about what are the rent limits for three- and four-bedroom properties? Get out your.
This is why I took a picture of HUD sites, so I would not. You said, I'm sorry, the rent limits for three and four bedrooms. See the size that I didn't talk about earlier? So 80% of the area median income currently in Boulder, this will not apply a year from now, is for a three-bedroom unit, the maximum rent is $2,609, so $2609. For Boulder, for 80% of the area median income, for a four-bedroom is $2,910. And since I talked about ones and twos, I'm just going to add the only other one that's on this chart, which is for a zero-bedroom or a studio or an efficiency, is $1,756. It just demonstrates how.
And there was just one other, I guess, clarification question. There was an earlier question about the community systems and Maya just want to ask the kind of more system very directly, are community systems an eligible infrastructure expense? And, you know, Natasha answered earlier that if it's a local government priority and it meets the definition of mitigation that is defined by HUD, which is long-term risk reduction for the community. I think there's some question over that. I have, I've been part of some conversations and I think it's questionable, but we can, we can follow up on more details.
I would just say that long-term, in this case, is 30 to 50 years risk reduction. So that's the timeframe that we look at when we talk about long-term mitigation efforts and projects.
Okay, yes, so thank you all for bearing with us as we sort through the, all this information and a lot of details and questions that you have. And this is the beginning of a partnership that we're not going anywhere. We're here for the long term to partner with the recovery navigators, help you, you know, get answers to questions that we may not have all the answers to right now and where we look forward to supporting you in this long, hard road that you are on right now. And we are here to support you. So thank you so much for your time. I want to just remind everyone that this is the beginning of the 30-day comment period and you can continue to give us feedback. And we are fixing our online forum that apparently is not yet, has the appropriate settings to allow you to provide that comments. But we will be responding to each and every comment or question that we receive online that will be an appendix to the action plan. And so your feedback is really important and we will be having to really think about, are there any shifts that we may want to make to our proposed use of the funds based on the feedback we get? So again, your input is very valuable and important and we look forward to continuing to work with you and all the many partners that are supporting this recovery. So any other final reminders that I need that I missed?
No, I don't think so. I'll go ahead and fix that form, apologize about that. Yeah, we'll be sending out the presentation, also putting it on our website and then all the contact information will be on there as well. So, thanks for coming out.
Thank you for all who participated online.